We're gonna go ahead and get, call the meeting to order. Ms. Gill, if you would call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Litten?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
Here.
And Mr. Webb?
Here.
Thank you.
Just to let everyone know, the vice chair is on his way back on a business trip. Mr. Castillo is out of town on business and Ms. Gill is probably watching at home, not feeling well tonight, so. You got us four here for you tonight. All right, and if you all would please join me for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to take a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
So move.
The second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you very much. All right. First up on the agenda tonight is the IB program at George Mason and, George Mason and abroad? Okay.
Dr. Manin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Very glad you could be here tonight. As usual during our meetings, we do have a spotlight that highlights some of our work here in FCCPS, and tonight is about the IB program and its intersections with students from abroad.
The continuity of the IB program seems to be very well understood by the families that are moving to the northern Virginia area. I'm constantly in contact with families based overseas in an IB school who'll be transferring to the area. They tell me, "We want to come to your school," in large part because they recognize that we will be able to continue an IB education for their children. Sometimes they're current NYPD students looking to pursue an IB diploma here in Falls Church. In other cases, they've completed a year of the IB diploma and recognize that we can complete the IB diploma requirements here due to the common curriculum that IB world schools offer.
I was so surprised at how easy my transition was from an IB school in Canada to George Mason. I set myself up well by checking which classes they offered and matching them to what my current school offered. I expected to have a rough transition, but I ended up having a stable one, which allowed me to flourish at George Mason.
Having taught IB chemistry and IB biology overseas in both Finland and in Morocco, I can say that the way the course is taught, the rigor of the course is always going to be the same, no matter where you're teaching in the world. One of the things about the IB that's really interesting is that they allow you to teach the topics in any order that you would like. One of the things I really like about the IB sciences is that there is an individual investigation that's required. Students design, they carry out, and they conclude and analyze all of their own data. It's a very rigorous project that is also evaluated externally by the IB examiners. One of the things that's really different, though, about teaching IB sciences here at George Mason as opposed to teaching internationally is that students who are taking an IB course overseas are using that IB score that they're gonna earn in July to enter into university. So their five, six, or seven gets them placement into university, whereas here in the U.S. we use it as an advanced placement. You may earn college credit, or you may earn a seating in a 200-level course as opposed to a 100-level course.
The framework, as we use it here at George Mason, is the same framework that I used in this school in Turkey where I taught. And so the students are experiencing and engaging with literature and language in the same way in Turkey as they are here. When I was in Turkey, I taught the book Things Fall Apart to juniors. When I came here, I taught the book Things Fall, or George Mason taught the book Things Fall Apart to juniors. And in the U.S., there's one way to teach that, where we look at this from a Western perspective, and we're informed by Greek mythology that really informs like a lot of our literature. Well, in Turkey, they have a completely different, you know, perspective of colonialism and post-colonialism, and all those stories still resonate with these kids, and the connections that they drew were from different cultures than what the connections from our students drew. So I thought that was really wonderful, to be able to be in a classroom and engage with a text in one way, and then come here and see that go on, and knowing that that's happening all over the world, since the course is much more about ways of thinking and ways of learning, less about like drilling into content, that that engagement will lead to good citizens. And so by having that experience and sort of knowing that my students coming through in Istanbul were experiencing IB English, IB physics, IB art, and then going out into the world with that mindset and the way that our students are here as well, I think that is gonna make for a really wonderful world down the line.
Any other comments?
Just that we, we're very proud of the work that happens particularly in the high school, in the DP program, and we have a couple of our fine folks here from George Mason to answer any questions that you might have about the IB program, but I'll let them introduce themselves first.
Good evening. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Deborah Segal. I teach IB sciences and honors chemistry.
Matt Hills, principal at the high school.
Any questions from anyone?
I think one of the things that struck me in the video that I was surprised by was there was clearly a number of people who have taught IB overseas that are now teaching in Mason. How has that experience been making the transition, and how common is that experience in the teaching ranks there?
How common it is in the teaching ranks, I'm not sure, but I know my family's State Department, so I'm very much in tune with what it's like for our students when they move and they arrive. And I understand, like, even though we feel like we're a really small community, when you've taught at a small school, you come here and it's a huge school. So I really am sympathetic and understand when my students tell me, "I don't have internet, and I don't have this, and we still have boxes." And so for me, in that regard, I'm, I think that's really helpful, that I have that experience, and I can really relate to my students. How common it is, how many teachers we have that do that?
Yeah, I think we have a few teachers in the building that have done a Teach for America program, Mr. Laub being one of them. His first year of teaching was actually done overseas through them, so it's relatively common for many of our teachers to go through some of those programs.
Other questions?
I was just gonna ask, I'm just curious, since you taught students overseas and you're teaching students here, and I know you also see students who are coming in from overseas, maybe at the high school level, I mean, do you notice a big difference in sort of their preparation going through an IB program compared to maybe where we are? I mean, I know we're fairly new in implementing this, but do you feel like it's pretty, pretty much the same in both places, or do you feel like maybe they were more prepared because they've been doing this for a number of years?
Do you mean the students or the schools?
The students.
Okay. Yeah, so I think the diploma program has been at George Mason for some time, and I think our students, they come to me as juniors, pretty well-prepared for the program, not unlike what I've seen overseas. But I think, like I said in the video, the big difference is their sense of motivation, and is this a personal accomplishment, "I'm gonna earn my IB diploma," or, "No, I must earn this. I've been accepted to Cambridge contingent on earning this score." And so they have to earn certain scores to get into the programs that they've been accepted to when they're overseas, applying to European schools. But no, they come in, they're prepared.
Ready.
They're ready to go.
Okay.
I guess mine would just be more of a comment. It's interesting that you would be presenting this this evening, 'cause actually, I guess just a couple weeks ago, I had a conversation with a parent, and they specifically moved here from overseas because of the IB diploma that their son had already started, and they wanted to make sure that he could continue it. So had previously been in the area several years ago in a different city, but when they came back this time around, they specifically came to Falls Church, so I think that says a lot about our program and a lot about the teaching staff, so thank you.
I think we can also recognize that the IB is embedded into our culture. It's not just about a course that Ms. Segal teaches, it's also about the IB learner profile, everything that we want our students to learn in and outside of the classroom, and I think that's what we're gonna share tonight when we do our presentation to highlight some of, you know, what we're doing at George Mason to make sure that our students are successful. So it's an important note to add.
You have questions? I just wanted to say also that I appreciate what happens within the IB program, to see the number of students that kind of come through that program and the little level of prepare, how they are prepared when it comes to move on to the next level. I always enjoy hearing students talk about how they are coming through the programs at George Mason, and particularly the IB program, that they sometimes are so much more prepared when they go to college versus some of their, some of their peers when they're in the, in some of the science classes, some of the language and classes like that. So it's always good to hear what happens with that, that particular program there, and I appreciate it. And as was Mr. Anderson, didn't realize we had folks who have taught actually abroad in the program that kind of brings that experience back to our students here, so in having that experience of what, the globalness of that program that, that is here at George Mason, and how we kind of fit right into the mold for that, for that program. But thank you all very much for that.
Thanks for coming.
Next up, we will recognize the champions of characters for the winter season.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening and welcome, Ms. Braven. We are very glad that you and your student athletes are here, and at this time, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Just a little information about it, these are our champions of character for the winter season. They were chosen by their coaches as having shown the utmost character, sportsmanship, respect, and integrity, so thank you for recognizing, recognizing them. We'd like them to speak a little bit about their seasons and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Hirsch. I'm here representing girls' basketball. So our season this year overall, we were 21-7, and we were conference champions for the third year in a row. We came runner-up in the region, and we got all the way to the state semifinals, so we had a very successful season. And I think one of the most important things that attributes our success is teamwork. And myself, and my coaches, and my teammates, we really stressed teamwork throughout the whole season.
Hi, I'm Caroline Polley. I'm a freshman at George Mason, and I'm representing the varsity cheerleading team for winter. So this was my first year cheering for George Mason, and I can honestly say that these people have become part of my family. The cheerleaders on the team were just so welcoming, and throughout the season, we created a really strong bond. I was a little nervous to do cheerleading, just because, you know, you have to trust people to not drop you when you're in the arena.
You definitely do.
It's kind of scary. But as the season went on, I learned to trust my teammates a lot, and we just grew as a team. And I'm really happy about the progress that we made since the beginning of the season to the end. The team and I are excited that the Olympics will be in cheer next year, because it's such an underrated sport, and it'll show everyone that it's equal to just any other sport out there. And George Mason High School is much more inclusive with cheer as a sport than other schools I know. That's one of the reasons why I love George Mason so much, and they're so great. The cheerleaders for George Mason are not only good cheerleaders, they're really good people, and we're always there for people, and they're there for each other, and even if you're not on the team, like, we'll talk to you and, you know, help you through life. So I just wanted to thank George Mason for having cheerleading as a sport that I could participate in, and I'd like to thank my coaches, even though that they're not here, for granting me the honor of having the champion of character award, and for such an amazing season, and I can't wait for the next.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Loy. I swim for the girls' swim team, and I am just so proud of all of them. I'm a senior this year. I moved here last year, and they, one thing I love about swim team is that swimmers, they just bring you in right away. They don't care who you are, where you came from, they will accept you. And last year, we didn't do as well as we wanted to at states, we got fifth, but this year, with our amazing freshman swimmers, we got second place at states, so I am immensely proud of all of them. We don't get to swim as much as we want to, but we don't really care that much. We love swim meets, we love everything that comes with it. I mean, just to make us even better swimmers, we dance on the sidelines, or it's the side of the pool, or we start singing at the top of our lungs at swim meets when we're not swimming, or either the boys are swimming or the girls, we'll cheer so loudly that some of the swimmers actually lost their voices multiple times during the season. But I don't know, I'm just, I'm just so proud of them. They never complain about anything. Even the people that didn't make it to states, they cheer us on, and they make sure all of us are so well, and I'm just, I don't know, I'm just so proud of all of them. Thank you.
I'm Noah Saret, and I'm the champion of character for the boys' swim team. In addition to having two great new coaches this year, we also had a really supportive team. Like Mackenzie mentioned, no matter what, the team was always cheering at the meets, and a lot of people lost their voices. Whether a swimmer won or lost, the team was always supportive and said, "Good job." And I think this team unity is something that helped the boys win the state title this year.
If you all would come over this side over here, we'll do a picture.
If you fork and step up, one, and then the guys who fill in the back, the tall guys especially. There you go.
Oh, you want this switch? Okay.
We box her out.
Here we go, one, two, three, and hang on, one, two, three. That'll lure.
It's a great big bag. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Next, in accordance with, in accordance with School Board by law 2.30, time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statement may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to the board members, and for the record, deposition and request. Any, any public comment?
No one is.
Okay. If someone would read us into closed meeting, please.
So pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter personnel under section 2.2-3711A1, in particular. Staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change in position, childcare leave, long-term medical leave, leave of absence, and advisory committee appointments and resignations.
Thank you very much. The second?
I'll second it.
All right. Ms. Gill?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
You got it.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Litten?
Yes.
And Ms. Russell?
Thank you very much. What, moves back and open?
No, it was a.
Don't have to read this time, it's just moved to open. Don't have to read this time, but just.
We don't have to read this whole thing?
Not yet.
I moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you very much. Now, you're all.
Now we need to read this? Okay. Whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative record vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.23711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City Public School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by the Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you very much. The second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Gill?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So I move the adoption of the consent agenda without objection, so all right, thank you very much. So next up would be business action on the information. First up would be the state of schools, Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening again, everyone. In my previous life in a former district, we had the good fortune of having an opportunity to hear from our principals once a year to present their state of the schools. It has traditionally, in my previous district, been a very long 35, 45-minute presentation, so knowing that I was in a new place and thinking about how we might be able to do some things a little bit differently, I've asked the principals to prepare a state of the schools this evening, but to shorten it substantially and sort of focus on three different areas, and I'll let them talk about what the three areas are that they're gonna be concentrating on. But tonight is a night, in many ways, to sort of highlight some of the things that are happening at MEH and at, or Henderson and at George Mason High School. We don't get an opportunity often enough, I think, to hear from our principals about the great things that are happening, so this evening, we have both principals that are here, they have their administrative teams with them, and with that, I will welcome Ms. Valerie Hardy and Dr. Rory Dippel to the table.
Good evening.
So it is super exciting to be here with you all tonight. I can't believe it's been eight months that we've been a team, leading the work at, and learning at Henderson, but it's been a good eight months, and I think as we were having a hearty laugh over dinner tonight, trying to bring a little fun to it as well. So we were really excited tonight to share with you the work that's happening at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. A lot of the work that is happening is, as Rory and I often say, because of the amazing staff and teachers that are at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. So we will go ahead and get started this evening. So Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School obviously has great significance in Falls Church City, and it's such an honor to work in a building that's named for such an important educational pioneer here in the city, and I would venture to say in the state of Virginia. Some of you may or may not know, but I have a very personal connection to Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. Long before I even knew about this opportunity to work here in the city and have the fortune to lead as principal, I knew about her through one of my dearest friends, who you see pictured here on the right, and that's Shayna Solomon, and that is her mother, who is Deana Sewell Henderson. For those of you who know the city and know it well, that is Ed Henderson's sister. And so long, long before I even knew that Mary Ellen Henderson would be a part of my life, this has been a connection that I've had, so I feel deeply, deeply honored to have the ability to lead and serve in such a wonderful legacy as hers. And that is a picture of Mary Ellen Henderson with, I call her Ms. Deana, and Ed there, taken there on West Broad Street, so I just think that's a lovely tribute to be able to share with you as we start our, our session with you today. So one of the things that we've been really excited about in terms of our work here in Falls Church City this year is the clarity that's really come with our division goals and priorities and the work plan that's then associated with it. It's really given us at, at the school level, an opportunity to really connect our work to that larger purpose and make it practical. So the first division goal we're gonna highlight for you this evening is our multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS. I like to refer to MTS as sort of the knowing student by name and need, and making sure we're catching everybody. So one of the things that we're charged with in the division work plan is to look at how we are gonna create a tier-one resource bank for, for our teachers. And when we talk about tier-one, I sort of think of this as how we really make sure we have that wide net that provides that high-quality instruction that catches all students. And so one thing that we talked about was how there's such great pockets of things that are happening, but not really a place, a format, or a vehicle to share that. So working with Summer Manos, our intervention specialist for the, for the system, she came back and really helped to reconnect our work at Mary Ellen Henderson. We were pioneers in, in doing this work. Eight years ago, there was a lot of the, the drive to start this, and the systems that were built have actually withstood the test of time. They've ebbed, they flowed, but we really have good practices in place. So one of the things that we came up with was this padlet, and I credit Summer Manos for the, being the artistic brain behind it, but it's been a great place for us to put all of the resources there in that first column that are given to us through the county that are really solid best practices, that help to give us that framework as teachers are, and teams are creating and designing that instruction. Then it's the, there's some additional resources, such as graphic organizers, visual organizers, reading strategies, vocabulary strategies, things that kind of go across all content and curricular areas. But then we also broke it down by grade level. Since our teams don't really have an opportunity to intermingle, this is a great way for an eighth-grade teacher to see some of the awesome things happening in sixth grade. For our encore team, I shared this with the staff, and Ms. Carpel kind of gave a joke like, "Great, everyone's gonna see my silent husky." But it's a great way for us to see those strategies that are working in encore that can help our sixth-grade teachers. And the last column that you can't see that we're in the process of develop, developing our behavior resources. So a quick, easy tool, using all of our internal brain capacity to share the learning, something that we're really excited about being able to use in real time. The next division goal that we're gonna highlight with you today is thinking about our students who are serviced in our sort of special population groups that we reference, specifically our students with disabilities, our LEAP students, and then our students who are economically disadvantaged. One of the first things that we started to do is we thought about what this goal is, which is really a percentage goal, right? It's raising the pass rate percentage. It's helping, it's really helping to focus our instruction. So there has always been, there have always been sound instructional practices utilized in providing that individualized support to our students with disabilities, but one thing we realized is we didn't have a clear pathway to making sure we were making the right instructional match. So our special education team and our reading resource teacher really worked to come up with some clarity around what are the, all of the data points that we can use? How do we decipher exactly what the student need is, and then provide the appropriate instructional match for that specific student, to make sure we're meeting them where their need is, and then being able to see those growth gains that we can monitor throughout the year? So this was done for reading, and we're in the process of doing this exact same thing for math, but it helps to provide classroom teachers with clarity when they're trying to decide, "Is this a student that needs intervention? Is this a student that I just need to try a different strategy?" It gives us some starting points that we can use as we have those grade-level kid talk meetings, and really drill down to what those needs are. Similarly, when we think about this goal in relation to our LEAP students, we have really utilized our Hero Club a little differently this year. Our Hero Club is an after-school program that initially had been funded through the foundation to help provide that targeted after-school enrichment, but we also wanted it to be more than just a skill drill. We wanted it to be a little bit more exploratory, and for those students to also have fun in their learning. So we've partnered with our business partner, Envision, and starting in April, they're gonna do some specific STEM-related, hands-on activities to also connect to the reading intervention that they're getting through Hero. And then lastly, for our economically disadvantaged population, I've been really warmed by our PTA, who have really tried hard and been very thoughtful in trying to figure out how they can also help to support our students. So just as recent as last week, we were able to meet with our social worker and really talk about some inventive and creative ways that they can help to provide that, that again, wraparound support. So I feel really good that we're putting in a lot of really appropriate strategies, and I'm excited to see those growth gains as we work towards raising that bar for, for all of our populations.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Hardy. The last division goal is international baccalaureate, more specifically the middle-years program, and what we focused on this year is really revising and reflecting on our unit planners, but as you can see in the picture up there, more specifically, we had each collaborative team, which is group of teachers, seventh-grade science, for example, sit down and look at their unit planners that they've been working on for a couple years, and think about, "What are the explicit skills that I teach within, for example, seventh-grade science?" And this is our focus, one of our focuses this year was on approaches to learning, or ATL skills, as you can see. So what we did on each team level was we had science teachers laying in lit, individual societies, they all went through their units, and then they crosswalked what skills they taught within the five categories that you see up there. So this is the result of seventh grade, for example. So this helps science teachers see what language arts teachers, what skills they're teaching explicitly, and make those connections for the students. So it's ultimately, you're gonna strengthen what we do as a collective group within a grade level, but then also looking at it vertically as well. So the next step in this process, we see, is sort of looking at it through quarters of... So the next step in this process, we see, is sort of looking at it through quarterly. So what skills are taught quarterly, and how do we sort of build that? And then how do we build that sort of vertically as well? Another thing we've been working on is interdisciplinary units. So interdisciplinary units are when two content levels work together to create a unit where they share the similar curriculum goal. So for example, in sixth-grade science, sixth-grade science and language arts, created an environmental science unit, which ultimately has students make natural connections between the different content levels, as well as build those skills within more than one content level. And we've also been improving assessment practices, so that's been an ongoing practice, and that also ties in with our other two goals as well. And then also, we are piloting the community project in the fall. So we're very excited to put that piece in place, to sort of make it more holistic, our work at Henderson. So when I started 12 years ago at Henderson, doesn't seem that long ago, but 12 years ago, the Henderson I knew was about 420 students. So one of the challenges, which is similar to other schools within our city, is that the population has grown. However, we see that also as an asset. And the asset has been that our teachers have really gone above and beyond, you know, whether it's sharing finite resources, whether it's being creative in how they create different assignments, but really using all the resources we have to make the best experiences for our students, whether it's working with students after school, whether it's the musical, clubs. So I guess a challenge, but also I see as an asset, is our staff meeting the needs of our students ultimately.
So I think it's something that I find great comfort in knowing, there's a national conversation around this next topic, is sort of where are we with student mental health and wellness? Ten years of my life have been spent being a counselor and caring about the whole child very deeply. And so to be able to share with you our work and connect to the work that's happening across the division is something that we're really grateful to have an opportunity to share with you tonight. So I wanted to share with you in sort of three buckets what we've been doing to sort of look at this from the lens of the student, the parents, and staff. So, you know, in terms of how we support the students, we have a phenomenal team of counselors and mental health providers, our teachers, who are constantly trying to build those relationships that we know are critical to managing and maintaining that openness that we need for students to be able to share as they're going through difficult times. Our Stress Less Week is coming up, but what we've been really thinking about and talking about as an admin and counselor team is what are we doing to make that more than a week, right? So how do we make sure that throughout the year, we're embedding resources and strategies and tools for students to know how to use in real time? Our counselors this year took the lead on doing this through PE classes and talking about it in different ways. A fun sidebar from that is because of that, in sixth grade, our sixth-grade counselor decided to offer a yoga class after school for students, right? Because she got the feedback that more students needed strategies. And so that's something that has been really helpful, but we're looking at, how do we do this more consistently, so that it's not a one-and-done? The last thing is the ATL course that Dr. Dippel is helping to create, that we're going to provide to all of our sixth graders, that's explicitly going to focus on those skills that are needed to be successful in middle school, those executive functioning skills, but also those management skills. And how does that all interconnect, then, with their transition to middle school in their learning? Our hope is that by being able to give that to students in sixth grade, we're charting a new normal for them, so that as they navigate their way through their time with us at Henderson and then find future successes at Mason, they've got a good foundation to build upon. We can't do this work in isolation, so the second column you see is parents. I spent my February principal coffee, and I know Ms. Russell was able to attend, and we really spent the entire time talking about students, the brain research behind why students might be feeling that stress and anxiety, and then what can parents do to support that. And it was such a well-received topic that we'll continue that conversation in April. I try to use my Husky Herald principals notes to highlight things that parents can do, resources that parents can use. I like to tweet, follow me on Twitter, but I like to tweet out things, too, for families and for our staff that could be helpful in helping to support, again, that whole child. And then we look forward to our work with Central Office and the Health and Wellness Committee to do some more division-level work around how we support this. But I wanted to really make sure that I highlighted the last column, because I strongly believe that we can't have balanced and healthy students unless we have balanced and healthy staff members. So Dr. Dippel and I have been very committed to giving resources to our teachers, to help to provide strategies that they can use immediately in the classroom, refocus and recharge books we've bought for each grade level, and it's been nice to see them actually using those brain breaks and strategies in class for the students. But it's also important for Dr. Dippel and I to support our staff, right? We're all family-first, people at Henderson, and we need to make sure that we help to take care of our staff, so that they can take care of our students. Sending the message about no homework, we've been explicit about it over spring break and future breaks, we all need a break. Our students need a break, they need a break, and it's okay. Again, setting that new normal, and then looking to partner with our friends at Mason and maybe looking at some future trauma training for our staff. Again, how do we navigate and cope with all of the demands that come at us every day? So again, a holistic approach of how we look at mental health and wellness for our students, families, and staff at Henderson. So when Dr. Noonan shared with us that we had an opportunity to do this, I was a little excited. And then he said, "One of them gets to be principal's choice," and I was sitting there going, "Ooh." There could be so many fun things to talk about, right? Our partnership with Envision, where we've got really rich, hands-on STEM programs happening for kids. We could talk about the exciting things happening with our Hero Club, our musical that got a review as middle school students, right? There's so many awesome things that happen every day. But I really wanted to put a spotlight back on what I hope is a change in culture in our building, which is a spotlight on joy, right? Schools should be fun. It should be a place where you come and you develop and foster and continue that love of learning. And so I really wanted to make that our spotlight. So instead of me talking about it, we've got a little video where some of the kids can share with you about their experience at Henderson.
Soon as I get a budget, we'll make it a lot easier.
Hi, I'm Jelena, and I'll tell you what I like best about MEH. I like there's friends, there's a lot of classes, so you won't get bored of the same teacher, and it feels, the day feels really short, so that you're never feeling tired.
What I like best about MEH is the amount of help that you can get from your teachers.
MEH is awesome because you have a lot of freedom.
You get to choose some of your classes, like music.
And there are a lot of cool after-school activities you can participate in, including newspaper club.
I think that my favorite part about MEH is all the nice technology that we get to use. For example, we can use 3D printers, and everyone gets their own computer for the school year.
MEH is awesome.
So why this is so fun to share with you all is, we actually asked our students to create a Flipgrid video using some technology tools that our instructional technology specialist on Slifer had shared with staff. Anyhow, they created a video for the incoming sixth grade. So they actually had produced and created this. So I just wanted to share a few of those clips with you. But again, our goal is about making school and Henderson a good, joyous place to be. So with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you all very much. It's always good to see these things, and you're right, it's good to hear from you all, because we all don't get to be in the school every day as you all are, and it's good to hear some of the great things that are happening daily within the schools. Questions?
Ms. Litten?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to comment and thank you guys. I've heard a lot of great things from people in the community, saying how much they appreciate that, they feel like the leadership at Henderson really understands what's important, and we just want to say thank you. I really appreciate that. And having a student there, I think she's having fun this year, and, you know, she has a lot of great teachers, so thank you for everything you guys are doing. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I would echo what Ms. Litten said, also having a student there, who oftentimes would probably prefer to be about anywhere else. But the fact that he goes to school and he enjoys it and, you know, is engaged and involved makes me really happy as a parent and also as a school board member. But having had an older child who also went through Henderson, I think that that was probably one of the best surprises for me, having recalled my own middle school years and having a lot of trepidation about my children going through, that they're definitely in good hands, and not just academically, but socially and mentally as well, that you guys are definitely doing a great job taking care of our children. So thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
The thing I would like to offer is a review of the musical myself. Actually, it's actually to point out how amazing it was to me on the Friday of the musical, that it not only overflowed the seating that had been laid out, but the three more tiers that got put out afterwards, and the enthusiasm of the kids, the enthusiasm of their instructor, enthusiasm of the tech crew, two of which came back down from the high school to help out in running the tech crew. So I think that that joy that you had in the video sort of permeated that whole night in a way that was really remarkable, especially for, you think about a middle school musical in a town where there's lots of other things going on, and that kind of a crowd turned out. It was great. So I guess my other question would be, if you were going to pick one other thing, what would it have been? Your principal's choice number two.
Hmm. Oh, I have to pick one?
Working so closely with GM.
Hard for Mason, Mr. Hill. We do have daily conversations, it feels like, many times. I think I would have to probably put, really, if I had to choose something, I would say it would probably need to be something along the lines of the, just the way that the staff thinks about children and how they approach the learning of children, I think would be the thing I would want to continue to spotlight, right? So the teachers don't just think about their content when they're trying to deliver it, they think about what's going to be the best match for kids. So I guess I would go deeper in that relationship. I mean, there's lots of partnerships that we could highlight, but I think that's the thing that makes it special.
Thanks. One or two questions.
So I appreciated the highlight of the work that you all are doing with some of the special populations at Risk Kids. Have you all seen an increase in the number of those kids that are now a part of the school system over the last?
We have. We've had growth across the board in all three of those subcategories. So right now, that has been, I think, one of the things that we've been experiencing as a challenge, but we're overcoming it. We're just thinking differently about how we use our resources and how teachers collaborate to meet those needs.
And with the limited, I know with the social worker that we have, that's pretty stretched right now, how often do you all have to work with them, and how effective is that right with you all right now?
I think that that's definitely been the stretch, right? So Ms. Hoover is with us three days a week, and I know she feels the challenge of wanting to do more and feeling like she's not able to keep up, but she does meet with us every Friday in our admin meeting, which is kind of our pulse on kids, and then she uses her other two days really to provide those services to students and families. But we definitely have a growing need for her to be more proactive in her work. So I know, as we think about, you know, needs down the road, that's something that we definitely feel would be high on our priority list.
Thank you both very much. Ms. Anderson?
If I could follow up, Mr. Sharon, the thought, population growth, do you think it's, with all of the changes that you've made in the identification and in the differentiation, do you think it's better identification of the students with special needs, or is it organic growth or a combination of the two?
I think it's probably the latter, thinking about the types of needs that we're getting, too. So one of the things that our specialized teachers will often say to us is, a lot of our students prior to now had just been learning disabled. And so the profile of what the needs of the students are now, just a little bit more complex. And so I think it's been that growth of volume and the type of need that has kind of put us at that threshold.
You know, I just want to say, great job. The work that Ms. Hardy and Dr. Dippel have been doing this year has been absolutely incredible. And what a team, right? What a team these two have become. They are a force, for sure, and I'd like to publicly congratulate Ms. Hardy on being on the shortlist of first-year Principal of the Year award winners.
I think I won. I only think there's a competition, I won.
We still have the rest of the year.
Good point, good point.
But I think you're definitely in the running. But really, a fantastic job you guys are doing, and the work that you've done to really create a culture of joy and passion for learning has been incredible to watch. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if I may, at this point, I'll invite Mr. Hills and his team up to talk about the work that they're doing at George Mason High School. So, Mr. Hills, I'll let you take it over.
How's everyone doing?
Good, good.
So I joked earlier, as you heard, about the partnership between George Mason and MEH. Principal Hardy and Dr. Dippel will attest to the fact that if we don't talk to each other every other day, every day, I usually get a phone call around maybe Tuesday afternoon saying, "Is everything okay?" And all joking aside, I mean, it really does speak to the commitment we have, that vertical alignment piece, it's important. It's important from our teachers all the way up to our administrators, and I think when you talk about the success of George Mason, we're only as good as MEH, and we truly believe in that. And that's something we've really focused on throughout the year. So I guess I'll start by just pointing out our champions of character this evening, and that speaks to really who we are as a community, as a school. What Mackenzie, who was the champion of character for our girl swimming team, failed to mention, because she is so humble and modest, which many of our students are, we finished second because we don't have a dive team. And so the diving scores were actually into the final scores, and the other team had one diver on their team, and they got a score, and that's why we lost. Because we beat them by a lot, trust me on that one, okay? Maggie Walker, and they're our biggest competitor, and we always want to point out when we really do win. So I think that that kind of starts off with, you know, who we are as a school. We believe in collaboration. We believe that we are only as strong as our team members. And so tonight, we're going to really talk to you about the state of George Mason. We're going to highlight some different programs. We're going to talk a little bit about some new programs that we started within the last year and a half, that we really want to create well-balanced students. Principal Hardy and Dr. Dippel talked a lot about mental health side of things, social, emotional learning. And so I'd like to first start off by introducing my team. We have our assistant principal, Dave Sorrents, assistant principal, Dr. Kevin Clark, director of counseling, Ms. Alana Reyes, and then the fifth team member, who is our athletic director, Ms. Julie Braven, actually had to run to a boosters meeting and then to cover about four events that we have going on. Because as you know, at the high school, there are events every single night of the week, which we love. We love it, every minute of it. So we're going to go ahead and get started with Dr. Clark.
Good evening. So I'm going to share a little bit about our multi-tiered systems of support, if you'll go to the next slide. So we've developed over the last four years or so, a really thorough process to keep a close tab, a close eye on students, their achievement, their behavior, their attendance, and their social, emotional needs, and use a robust problem-solving model through both our classroom teacher teams, as well as a team that meets weekly, administrators, counselors, specialists, to really dig in the data, make sure none of our kids are falling through the cracks. And really, what we do is look at a particular need, really drill down to what the problem is, and apply an intervention that's research-based, that we think is likely to address the particular issues that we're identifying. We come back at a certain amount of time later, from anywhere between four weeks to eight weeks, and see if the intervention has worked. This model is a model that's been in place for four years, but every year, we add a layer, add an intervention, and continuously work to improve the process. For example, our behavior process, this year especially, we've been able to roll out some tier-two interventions. We've been looking at continuing to work at our tier-one level, which is the classroom space, our teachers, what they're doing every day, and their best practices in the classroom with all of our students. And another example is our attendance. We recognize, when you look at our discipline data, you have very low numbers across the board, but attendance is an area where we can struggle. And that's a place that we've really looked at our systems to align with school board policy, to align with state regulations, and really improve our communication. and really improve our communication. And what we're finding as we're digging through the data, as I'll share in a second, is that our interventions are working. And kids, when we're reaching out, when we're having meetings, when we're intervening with parents early, that the attendance is improving. And so, one of the things we're doing this year, as we're really going on to our fourth year of implementation of MTSS, we're looking to evaluate the effectiveness of our model, the effectiveness of our interventions, and try to look at what's working and what's really helping students improve, as well as some of the other student outcomes that are so important to us. So, really, it's been a great process and looking forward to continuing that improvement.
Yeah, we're digging through that data right now, and it's showing some early signs of really good stuff, so we can't wait to share that, but we haven't quite got through it yet. So, on to special pops. You know, we focus on three main. The two we have highlighted up here are English language learners and our special education students, but also our economically disadvantaged, which we kind of started with this year, working with central office. A lot of times, we've kind of overlooked them in the past, just because they typically fall into one of these other subgroups, but we made a kind of a special day to dig to find, you know, which of those economically disadvantaged students were falling into the category of not students with disabilities, not English language learners. So, you know, oftentimes, kind of falling into the cracks. And it was a small handful, and it was even a smaller handful that needed additional support while looking at their grades, but it's another area we've been able to focus on. And as you can see up here, we have our English language learners. We want them to be able to achieve at the same level as all of our other students. And then, we're trying to increase the opportunities for students with disabilities in IB courses. And then, at the bottom, I have this long thing here that I want to read to you, where it says, "Continuous communication between MTSS team and case manager to track student progress and streamline strategies for improving academic standing." And the reason I read that is that's actually been developed by our special education teachers. And that tiny little document on the right is the document that they used. And they have underneath that some measures and how they're going to do that. And then, you can see, we have some little boxes. That's Dr. Clark and myself reviewing that and giving them feedback. So, it's kind of this whole feedback loop of, you know, us with the goal, with the teachers, and the goal, and all the way down to the students to make sure that's actually working. And that's kind of how we're focusing on our special pops right now.
One of the most important components of our academic program has always been the baccalaureate, international baccalaureate program. As you know, last year, we were authorized as a middle-years program, spanning from the sixth grade up to the 10th grade, and we're super excited about something that's happening tomorrow, which is our middle-years program, personal project showcase, the first, the inaugural showcase. It really represents a year's worth of work, not just for our 10th grade students, who have been working diligently since last March, but also really the entire community, from MEH teachers to Ms. Hyde at the central office, and really people throughout the community, staff members throughout the community, who've mentored our 10th grade students and ushered them through this process, which has been a challenging process. Just to share a little bit about the project itself, students have to investigate something. They have to plan out a significant and challenging action, and then they take that action and reflect on it. This is supposed to be the culmination of five years of learning, and through this project, they're supposed to demonstrate the growth on skills such as communication, collaboration, self-management, all of those skills that we know are so important for success in 21st century. And so, we're really excited to showcase these projects tomorrow. Hope you can all be there. We have international potluck dinner from 5:30 to 6:30. Then, some of the students are doing performances as their project, so that's between 6:30 and 7:00, and then 7:00 to 8:00 in both gyms, we'll have the projects showcased. And so, really, really, an incredible accomplishment for our, 90% of our 10th grade students submitted a project, and that's amazing. And that's due in large part from their hard work and the hard work of all the staff members who mentored. In addition to the middle years...
I was going to say about the 90%, because we actually dug through it today. A lot of the students that had not turned in projects are new students, so you guys recognize the transient environment that we work in. We have students that are in and out all the time. So, we saw that, I'd say, the majority of those kids didn't arrive to us until after December.
Yeah, about two-thirds, that's right.
So, really, an incredible accomplishment. One of the, in terms of our 11th and 12th grade program, the diploma program, and our other offerings as well, we are trying to always help students make great choices about the courses they take, encourage them to take challenging courses, which we know are likely to help them be successful later on in life. And so, one of the things we're looking at is how do we get kids to experience this rich and really sort of curriculum that focuses on critical thinking, communication, 21st century skills, and looks at curriculum, both from a literature perspective and a language perspective, of what are they seeing in the media, what are they reading in the newspaper, not just certain texts and whatnot. So, we're looking to expand and infuse that curriculum throughout our 11th and 12th grade courses, and look at how do we get more kids involved in a rigorous and relevant curriculum in the 11th, 12th grade years. And of course, when you see the number of kids who do enroll in an IBAP or dual enrollment course at George Mason, it's above 90% by the time they're seniors, and we want to keep inching that number up, because we know that that's helpful when they move on to whatever it is that they do next in life.
So, this is our program highlight, and we had many different things to choose from, but since I got to the slideshow first, we got to highlight the Mustang rodeo. So, we've been doing it for about a year and a half. We've done five rodeos and offered about 100, had 100 different offerings so far. It's been, it was a student-teacher kind of idea, then they developed it, ran with it, to the point where we have, you know, 20 to 30 offerings each time, and we're going to show you a video in a second with some of those. But one, you can see, is modular origami, which Ms. Jason came tonight to...
I didn't know of that.
Don't say that, come on.
But she's actually running that through every rodeo. It's one of the most popular things. So, we do this through Eventbrite, and it usually sells out in about five minutes. It's kind of funny, they get in there and sign up. But we've had so many different things, from guest speakers, like I said, through modular origami, and a couple of the other things you see up there. But I'll show you the video.
And I think really, this kind of lends itself to supporting our students' social and emotional needs. We talk about how, yes, we offer very rigorous programs at the high school. We have students taking seven, eight, early morning courses, you name it. And we got to a point where we said, "Okay, we have kids in our building. They just want to be kids. They want to enjoy themselves and have fun, take a deep breath and relax, and this is an opportunity for them to do so." So, we're going to show you the video that we put together, Mr. Laub and the Lasso TV.
So, you saw the VR goggles. That was actually the refugee experience. That was one of the neat things we did last year, where they, it was a whole thing in the gym where they got to experience what it would be like. You saw the library. So, we do have a read-in option where they get a chance to silently read. We had a political forum that I believe you were a part of. So, just a variety of different things, and almost all of them are student, kind of, they put in a proposal, we'll review it, and then we'll have a couple that come from the administrative side or teacher's side, but usually between 20 and 30 for each rodeo.
Thank you. All right. Whoa, whoa.
That's good, that's good.
Yep, just trying to...
Starting at tier one. So, I'll begin by starting to talk about social-emotional support and intervention. You can go to the next slide. That tier one, when we think about the rodeo and talking about the student as a whole student, rather than just as an academic being, you know, incorporating different things within the academic environment is things like the rodeo. We started a new program this year called Freshman Advisory. We saw the need to address kind of these universal social-emotional topics that we didn't have the opportunity to present during the day. And so, once a week, we have our Mustang ambassadors, which are selected juniors and seniors, work with a paired teacher, and they have a group of about 10 to 15 ninth graders that they have gotten to know over the course of the year. And they've been able to establish connections with those kids. They cover a variety of topics, everything from time management to like fun, they've had fun parties, but they've also connected. We identified a group of topics with five different categories at the beginning of the year that we felt were necessary to teach them as incoming freshmen, and we've been able to hit them through a variety of lessons, really student-led. We have the students work with us, the older students work with us over the summer to develop the lesson plans. And so, we felt that they were more authentically driven, and the students that were in, the ninth graders, were able to buy into the process. And it was also another way to connect our ninth graders with another adult in the building and students in the building that they might not ever have another interaction with. We know that students are successful when they are connected with people and they're connected with the building. And so, that's what our tier-one level of support is. It's that universal, everyone in the building is getting that experience. And so, we have that overarching mind-body and character expectations and matrix, and we reward those behaviors with our mind-body and character awards, which our teachers, our administration, any of our staff are able to give out to students that they see excelling in one of those areas. And so, that's a nice way to be able to reward kids beyond getting an A. You know, maybe some of those students that aren't necessarily going to get recognized for their academic achievements, but because they're just kind and they're always looking out for people. And so, we're able to encourage that through that universal kind of tier-one. We obviously have access, we have an incredible group of counselors, and I feel very lucky to be starting a new focus and reframing how we look at our social-emotional support and really starting or continuing the work that's already been started to develop a comprehensive school counseling program. I think we have an incredible academic advisement and college advisement process, but also, we are now working on how do we develop those social, meeting all the social-emotional needs. And we have done a really good job, I think, beginning that this year. And it's been a tough year. There's an incredible amount of mental health needs, not only in our building, but countrywide. And we want to move to the process of being able to do more proactive programming and not as much reactive. And so, I believe with starting things like Freshman Advisory, that is beginning that process. All of our students are meeting with all of our kids at a minimum once to twice a year. Not them coming down, we are pulling them in, and that's something that has been new over the last couple of years. In terms of school-wide programming, we do Web Red Ribbon Week, we do Stress Less Laugh More Week, which is coming up. We bring dogs in, the kids go nuts, right? And then, like, that's the highlight, the therapy dogs. No one remembers anything else but the therapy dogs. And I'm a speaker series, and that's been an opportunity to really explore some of the things that aren't able to explore in the classroom. I heard a speaker, she had been a victim of human trafficking, and she actually spoke at the rodeo, and I believe she's going to come speak to our students, any student that wants to come hear her speak. And she was able to bring up topics that students might not encounter in the regular curriculum. And I think that lends itself to a new conversation for our tier-one strategies and supports, because having that conversation in the school building where it's safe and you can access an adult to have it in a safe way, that's nonjudgmental, is a really important thing for all of our students to be able to have. So, all of our kids get our tier-one supports. The next slide is about tier-two, and those are for our students who need more targeted intervention. They're more at risk for developing mental health challenges. And I will say that over, is it about 33% of our students either have IEP services or on a 504 plan. And the majority of our students that have 504 plans, one of the main health impairments are mental health impairments. And so, targeting and supporting those students through a variety of, in the classroom, having the teachers understand what the needs are of the students, and having the counselors and everyone work together to meet those needs in the classroom, and our counselors also being available. Also, really having a large breadth of resources available for the families when we can't meet the needs in the building. Obviously, our purpose during the day is to get them through the day, to make sure they are in a place where they can learn and access the academic environment, and if they need help outside, it's accessing those resources. And we have a wide network for that. And then, our growing need is our tier-three supports. Obviously, one of the kind of the embedded things is signed IEP and 504 counseling, and we do a tremendous amount. I will tell you, I worked at a school that had emotionally an ED center, and we didn't do as much IEP and 504 counseling as we do more here than we did there, which is really amazing to me. Our kids have needs, and we do our best to accommodate, we absolutely do accommodate those needs, but it takes a toll on our time and resources, because it's important that we meet those needs. But sometimes, I think that does take away from our ability to do our preventative programming. We have a well-established and I think a really well-streamlined threat assessment protocol and support if students have to go through that process, either for threat to self or threat to others. And then, we work very closely. We do have a number of students that have to seek inpatient support, whether it's hospitalization or other residential rehab facilities. And so, we have really developed a great process to work with those. And it's sort of a program, it's modeled after another district. It's called the Return to Learn, to really make sure everyone's on the same page when it comes to reintegrating the student back into our environment at BM and support them in the best way possible.
Excellent. Thank you. So, this is the piece that kind of ties everything together. I spoke earlier about our commitment to making sure that our students have every possible opportunity in the building to be well-rounded, and whether that's to belong to a club, to a sport. We want them to excel in mind-body and character. And this is a slide that I actually asked Ms. Braven to put together. These are all of the Virginia High School Sport League clubs, as well as athletic programs available to our students. We have over 800 students enrolled in these programs. Now, yes, many of them are duplicates, but I think it speaks to the commitment that we have to make sure that our students just aren't excelling in the world of academia, that they are excelling on the field, that they're excelling when it comes to robotics, they're excelling when it comes to different clubs. And I think this, these numbers speak to that specifically.
And, Mr. Reyes, if I can just jump in there quickly. I hadn't thought about this before, but I was looking at participation. One student actually stands out to me, and he is one, when he entered ninth grade, I was worried about him because he was so quiet. And he still is very quiet. That is who he is by nature. He is a real academic. He loves learning, and I think sometimes even stands out in that capacity amongst his peers. And I worried that he would kind of slip between the cracks because he wasn't involved. And he was able to get engaged in a couple of clubs, but also, I won't name the sports, but a couple of sports, and he is so connected there. And so, not only is he feeling his place in the classroom, he might not have this tremendous peer group, but he has these connections in these athletics. And he's not a student that you necessarily think of as a traditional athlete, but he has found that connection. I think that has helped really transition him into the high school and has kind of been a great protective factor for his emotional and mental health needs.
That's a really good point, Ms. Reyes. And I think about, I probably know these students you're talking about, but it's also many of the students that we work with, where we're working as a team, we're listening to parents, we recognize that what can we offer these students? What's available for them? They may not be the best soccer or tennis player, but guess what? We have 68 clubs that are available. And you know what it takes in our building to start a club? It takes you, it takes another fellow student who's interested in whatever it is that you want, and then a sponsor. And I'll tell you right now, we have 117 professionals in our building, 78 teachers. I guarantee you, 99.9% of them, if Nathan, for example, went up and said, "Hey, can I start something?", they'd be there to support you like that. I know that we've had students who said, "Oh, my goodness, what am I going to do? I don't have a sponsor for this. The sponsor's leaving. They're going on maternity or paternity leave," and someone always steps in. And that's what we're all about at George Mason, helping each other out and making sure that the supports are in place. As I mentioned, we have over 1,000 participants in multiple clubs, and that's managed through our athletic and activities office right below. Mr. Webb, you can probably tell what that picture's about. It's our robotics program, and I know Vice Chair Redinger and Chairperson Webb have been to several of our robotics competitions, and so, we thank you for that. They just qualified for the district tournament, so we've been in this six-week period where the districts are now being held at the Xfinity Center in Maryland in three weeks. We encourage everyone to come out. It's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the end of spring break. So, yeah, we're really looking forward to watching them perform, and that's where we're about at, at George Mason. So, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks. I just, first of all, thank you all very much for your incredible work. And on behalf of the students that we had, I just had a follow-up, just to sort of tie a couple of pieces together. Ms. Reyes, you said 33% of our students were on an IEP or a 504 plan. And Dr. Clark, you said that 90% of the kids completed their middle-years program. Can you talk about how you make the IB program accessible for students that are in special ed and are in poverty, and also are ESOL kids, like the special population kids that Mr. Sorrentis spoke about?
One of the great things about the middle-years program is that it's a whole-school program. It's all the students. It's your top, your best performer and your student with significant needs. And when we approach a program like that, it brings the importance of high expectations for all students. It brings high-quality curriculum to all students. It brings high-quality assessment and authentic opportunities to have in... It brings high-quality assessment and authentic opportunities to have inquiry and to show what you know in different ways to all students. And it's really, I think, the power of what we're doing now with our sixth through 10th grade students, and of course, what's happened for a long time with our 11th and 12th grade students, is that we're really changing how we view our curriculum, we're changing how we deliver our instruction to really focus on inquiry, critical thinking, and develop these skills for all of our students. And I think that's one of the most amazing things. And also, when you think about the personal project, it does take some additional planning and consideration of student needs and who are we going to, maybe this student would do great with this mentor, but not so well with this other mentor, or this student really needs to be working with so-and-so because they have a great relationship. So there was a lot of behind-the-scenes work. And if our middle-years coordinators, our previous coordinator, now interim coordinator were here, they would be able to attest the amount of hours that they. And two teachers who've led on the middle-years, the personal project, over the last year or so, we've had two teacher leaders who've taken a real leadership role in rolling this out. And it's been a tremendous team effort. And so really, I would say it goes back to that team, that team mentality of, hey, we're going to do everything it takes to make sure these kids are successful.
I also think it speaks to Mason's culture that every student is, and I want to say accommodated, but we know what the student needs and we're going to work with them where they are. I believe there is an higher-level class that is accessible for every student in our building. And so when you think about all of our students, I was thinking about that 90%, and actually when you include honors, it's even higher if you think honors, IB, APE, and DE. There is something that every student can access with our students that have very significant learning disabilities, to those that are IB learners, I think, you know, full IB diploma candidates. There is something that is interesting and available for everybody and we are going to encourage those students. And I think of one student who has a 504, who has always been a solid kid in his general education classes and feels comfortable there. And he was a general ed, just our regular English 11 class. And his English teacher said to me, Alana, he can take DE English next year. I know he doesn't think he can, but I am going to get him through that class, not by making the curriculum easier, but by spending the time to teach him how to do it. And he is rocking it out. And not only has he felt a sense of like kind of self-worth and the ability to do it, but also I just think it speaks to our teachers really knowing what our kids need and helping them kind of go over that hurdle that a lot of students in other schools aren't able to because it kind of feels like there's a barrier between them in those higher-level classes.
And if you have the chance tomorrow night to come over to the high school at 7:00 and see the personal project showcase, it's kind of the culmination. So you think about, basically, if you walked and talked to every other student in there, they probably either have a 504 plan or an IEP, or they've come from an economically disadvantaged household. And I would promise you, you probably won't be able to tell who's who because this is something that they were extremely passionate about. And you're going to kind of get to hear that passion come out and see what happens when they're doing something that they're genuinely interested in. You'll be blown away by hearing them talk about how excited they are about what they learned.
I'm with Greg.
Stan, do you see?
I have a few and I'm trying to figure out the right order to ask them, actually, to be honest. So.
Go right ahead.
Starting, start the question. The Mustang rodeo, the process for new things being offered each year, how does that work?
Yeah, it's actually every time we have a rodeo, we put out a proposal form and that goes out to the student body. You know, they'll pass that along, but they'll, we'll get, you know, like I said, 20, 30, 40 submissions. And then we have an administrative team review those. And after they're reviewed, we notify people if they've been selected or not. And then we go through the process of them getting ready to actually perform the rodeo. We'll typically have a few people, you know, not be able to do it by the time it comes along, but it really is just simply submit, review, and then we go forward.
In the review, what are you looking for in the balance of things?
Yeah, so we have them fill out a couple of different things, including kind of what is the purpose, you know? What exactly is it going to be made up of? Why are you doing this? And we want to make sure that it's, you know, that it's something that we're able to do inside of the school, but also the kind of the neat thing about the rodeo is that there's a choice. And so, for example, this last time around, we had Peter Reed set up to come. His daughter had survived the, no, I'm sorry.
No, his daughter was in the Virginia Tech massacre. And I knew him from way back when and he's a gun violence prevention advocate and does a tremendous amount of work. Just by like kind of our nature of our conversation with the students after Parkland, I was like, oh, let me reach out to him. And he was so excited to come and then we had a wind delay. He predicted that, not.
But that's not something we maybe would necessarily offer the entire student body. So in the rodeo format, it allows a choice for students, so they're not required. But that would have been something we'd offer in the auditorium. So we'd still, you know, have, it would be open to basically as many students as wanted to come see that.
Okay. Switch gears a little bit and talking about the assessment for the MTSS, and you were talking about basically these sort of four to six-week chunks of time and then tracking at the end to see how that's working out. What have you found in terms of how many, I don't know, is there any sort of rule of thumb about how many different cycles, how many different types of interventions you need to try to have sort of success for, to get the best outcome for the students?
That's a really good question. I think the best way to think about it is that when we're problem-solving at that level, each student has very distinct needs. And so it's hard for me to say, well, on average, we, you know, it takes four weeks or eight weeks because it really depends on the student. What I would say is about half the kids we problem-solve, by the end of the year, they're no longer in the problem-solving process. So that's sort of a rule of thumb where we can, you know, in general, say that as the team has addressed the need and put in an intervention, addressed, you know, additional support in X class that they're struggling in, and maybe that was the target, we typically, over the course of one year, half of those students no longer need that additional support. And another thing to keep in mind, too, is that some of our students are identified for maybe a tier-two support where it's very targeted to their reading level. And we have, you know, we look at SOL, we look at STAR, we look at course grades, and there's decision rules. And so as they make progress, and they typically in our reading intervention classes make a year to a year and a half progress in a school year, often more than a year and a half. So a student who's a couple of grade levels behind, by the end of a semester or a year, could potentially be out of that intervention. And we do have great results with that. So typically, by 10th grade, they're no longer receiving that intervention. So really, it depends on the kid, but we do have a lot of success. And depending on, right now, what we're really getting better at is not just looking at it from an academic perspective, so being able to really target, well, this kid, this kid is academically, you know, able to do it, but is maybe struggling behaviorally, and then targeting a behavioral intervention as opposed to an academic intervention. So we're getting a lot better at targeting a specific concern with a student. But, you know, it really does depend on this.
Okay. Two more, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
The other two, two more. One is about the freshman advisory, because that's new this year. How is that working? And I guess the other question is, how do you know?
So I will tell you, there has been incarnations of this forever. There was, way before I ever showed up, there was TA, which was something else, there was homeroom, which has been around. And I think the program has ebbed and flowed over the years. I am a big proponent of connecting kids with adults and older students in the building. I believe that is vital to connectivity for the whole student body. And so when we were talking about, as an MTSS team, how we could develop, how we could do that kind of tier-one social-emotional learning, last year, we thought of advisory. And so we spent a lot of time this summer really preparing and digging in and getting this done. And I think we really did a great job for semester one. We planned it out for half a year, knowing that we could deliver quality-level instruction for those kids for half a year, and we did a great job. And then the second half of the year, we're really using to focus on a few more social-emotional learning pieces, but also introducing the ninth graders to the MIP project and not taking their academic time, but using the advisory time. So I think it has been successful. I've done several surveys with some of the advisors to get feedback on the lessons. And we're going to do a ninth-grade-wide assessment to see how they felt about advisory. I think anecdotally, I've heard lots of mixed, I've heard lots of fantastic reviews. One of the ninth graders interviewed me for a newspaper article in November. And she's like, I'd like to talk to you about advisory. I was like, okay. What do you think? And she was like, I love it. And I was like, great, let's talk. So I do think there's been a lot of success. And, you know, it's hard, these ninth graders have to give up their Tuesday Mustang block. And let me tell you, that did not make me popular or any of us, but they bought in and they're going. And for me, that's a huge success in and of itself.
One of the things, too, that we've sort of looked at as a way to measure some of the work that we're doing, especially when it comes to social-emotional behavior on how kids feel in our buildings, is the comprehensive school climate. In the territory we did, we did two years ago, we're looking to do it in the spring and collect that data every couple of years so that we can look at, well, are kids feeling more comfortable? Are kids feeling like there's less bullying? Or are they feeling more inclusive? Or are they being, you know, are people, are kids mean because of gender, race, you know, sexual orientation, whatever the case may be? And looking at some of that data to see, well, hey, did the ninth grade advisory program, did it help take the scales a little bit? And when you look at our numbers two years ago, you'll see that our numbers are incredibly positive. And so it's hard to identify places to really focus on, but there are some areas where, you know, you can kind of see here and there. So we do want to collect that data and use that to help us evaluate some of the things that we're doing.
Also, the hope is to also do a school-wide needs assessment for our students and families and teachers to see where we can focus some of that social-emotional learning need. And as we move forward in years to come, kind of target those specific needs within the advisory in other ways as well.
I think as an administrative team, we constantly grapple with how do we meet the needs of our students? And when I talk about those needs, I specifically refer to the social-emotional needs. We talked about all the different ways that we attempt to do it, but I think we need to be very careful in terms of the freshman advisory because if that's what it's meant for, oftentimes, we find ourselves in the predicament where it's, oh, my goodness, we have all of our freshmen in one room at this time, what can we do? Can we use it for, let's say, the personal project? Can we use it for this? And so I don't want the students to think for one second, well, hold on, you know, this was meant for something that actually we planned it to be a little bit different. So I think some of the feedback we received for the second semester, we're looking at that, how do we fine-tune it? Any programmatic change often takes anywhere between, you know, two and three years. So I like the direction it's moving in, but I think there are some things we're going to evaluate at the end of the year and maybe try to fine-tune a little bit.
That leads to the very last question, which is resource limitations. Talking about assessing needs, trying to do the best job you can with the resources available, what resources do you feel like are the biggest limitations on you that we ought to know about?
Absolutely. I think it's a great question. You know, we've sat here, we've presented the budget and we talked a little bit about our needs. Our presentation tonight focused a lot on the social-emotional needs of our students. You know, we talked about our threat assessment protocols, a number of students who are dealing with anxiety, depression, a number of students identified with 504s, IEPs. You know, I think in our budget, we have asked, the division has asked for a full-time psychiatrist, I mean, or psychologist, that is something that's extremely important. And I think it speaks to our needs specifically at GM and across the division. So yeah, I think that's one place we would probably have to start.
I think just more opportunity also, and I'm always talking about the social-emotional piece, but to be able to help our teachers and give them more time. We've spent a tremendous amount of time really positively helping them understand the MIP process, but I would love to also put more time with the social-emotional piece to really help them be able to even better help our students in the classroom. I think they do a tremendous job with a lot of stuff they deal with every day and getting through their curriculum. And so just more ability to support them. And again, I think we do, we have a lot, but we also do, we do a lot with the time we have and it would be nice to have another person.
As always.
Other questions? Questions, comments?
My comment would just be, and I mean, you guys all really just talked about this, but I do appreciate sort of that focus on connectedness for kids. You know, I think as we're all thinking about school violence and some of those issues, you know, to me, that's very much the heart of how we kind of get at some of those problems. You know, there's other external things to do, but I think so much of it comes from that, people feeling connected. So I appreciate, I do appreciate that. I have one other question, and this is just something I feel like I've heard a lot about this fall, talking to people, was sort of the idea of the students who are non-academic, but they're not special ed, you know, sort of those students who are maybe not really on the college track. I mean, a lot of students are, but, you know, there are some who maybe don't put themselves in that category. And, you know, how are we, do we feel like we have the resources to really serve those students with what they need?
That's a wonderful question. You know, we've kind of looked at different numbers from the past few years. One in particular, I think of the Arlington Career Center numbers. I remember my first year, we only had about 18 to 19 kids enrolled. Last year, we had 87 course requests. We have about 67 students currently attending ACC. For scheduling reasons, you have to actually lose two blocks throughout the day. So it's challenging, you know, with the transportation and such and other. But I think one of the things it does speak to is the fact that we do have, our needs are changing, right? I think we can all agree that maybe 10 years ago, it was expected that every single student at George Mason was going to go to a four-year college. And that's not the case anymore. We have students that are taking gap years, we have students that are going directly into the workforce, we have students that are going for certificate programs at Northern Virginia Community College. I can tell you, last year, we took a trip with about 50 students and we're looking at these 18-month and 24-month certificate programs. And they felt financially, you know what? That's probably in my best interest, my family's best interest. I can tell you that if we had a ranking system, which we don't, but what would have been our valedictorian at the time, she decided instead of going to Harvard, she said, you know what? I know what I want to do. And so I'm going to go to Nova for two years, I'm going to excel in certain courses, I know that I want to be an elementary teacher. And, you know, she's going to go on maybe the two-year route after that to George Mason. So I think it does speak to what we need to do as a counseling department, as administrators, as teachers, to prepare our students. But we're definitely recognizing a huge shift in what our students' needs are.
I think in addition, also, just looking at the numbers, you know, we're starting the master schedule process, and we have a tremendous number of course offerings. And as one teacher said to me today, Alana, that's what the community expects. And it's trying to balance meeting every student's academic need, but also with the number of people we have in the building. And it's a real challenge. And it's like, and again, making sure that every kid has a place in a classroom that they feel comfortable with, not only is it right for them, but they feel comfortable with. And I think that's a battle every year when it comes to scheduling and our teaching.
I would add one piece to that conversation that you're having, too. And that is what data and research bears out with respect to what do students need when they leave high school, whether they go to college, or they go to career, or they go to two-year institutions or whatever. The skill set that is rooted in the work of IB, problem-solving, critical thinking, communication, is needed regardless of where you're going to go at the end of high school. So the curriculum for a student who's going to be career-ready is the same as the curriculum that should be available for a student who's college-ready. Because the last thing I would want to do is put our kids in a position where they don't, where they lose choice. When they graduate from high school, we want to give our students as many options as they can. If they want to go to a four-year institution, they can. If they want to go to career, they can. If they want to go to a two-year institution, they can. So just keeping in mind that that skill set and curriculum needs to be the same regardless of where you're going after high school.
I would just add, too, in working with the Career Center, their numbers for us, over time, unfortunately, may decrease because they're adding an entire high, they're building a high school at the Career Center and they're developing a governor's program that's going to enroll full-time students taking career technical class at the Career Center. So part of, as we, one of the things we need, a new building would be wonderful, I think our program.
I think we can work that out.
It would really benefit us, I think. But I think we also need to be forward-thinking in terms of how do we become self-sufficient, or more self-sufficient with our career and technical programs? Because we do have a lot of kids who want to take those classes and more and more every year. And some of the needs, I think, we could probably fulfill ourselves. And we have developed some of those career and technical courses over the last couple of years. Robotics, TV media production is in our second year. You know, we have a great computer science program. So, I mean, we do offer many CT classes at Mason, but again, consider ways to be more self-sufficient and in thinking of the new building in a way of how do we build those programs into Mason as well, so.
Thanks.
Ms. Russell?
I guess mine's also more of a comment, too. And that is, I just sit here and listen to you guys speak and the presentation, the information that you share, and it's just, it's so impressive in so many ways. And again, just comparing it to my own high school experience and where you were kind of a number, and you had your courses, and then you were, you know, expected to go on to college. But just your focus on the whole student and the needs of them besides just the academic, because quite honestly, with your presentation, I would say it was very little about the academic and very much focused on the social emotional. And I just find that so encouraging, impressive, not just for the current students, but as they go out into the workplace and regardless of what they do, that those skills are going to be transferable. So I thank you for all of that and for what you do for our students every day.
Thank you. And then for me, it's also, it's refreshing to hear a little bit more so talking about ways to de-stress some of the kids. Because going to a school like George Mason and the level of the academic rigor and stress that comes with that of where am I going to go to college at? You know, I see that in my day job on a regular basis of the level of stress that can come with that. And it's good to try to figure out how to balance that with some other activities and things that can be de-stressers in that. Because generally, as Nathan knows, he's found out a little early, but a lot of kids with kind of that more traditional finding out when you've gone to college of April coming around the corner, I'm sure the stress level can get really high if they are still waiting to hear from colleges and universities. But also, I'm happy to hear that a lot of our students are looking at ways, because I'm a firm believer in that even though my day job is recruiting college kids to go to college, but in that job, I see there are a lot of kids who other things should be in their future, and I make sure that I stress that to them. Because it is a huge cost to those kids that whether you get there and stay, or if you get there, figure out after the fact that you've taken out a student loan, that this isn't the place for you, but you still got to pay that money back, that it's good to try to figure out some of the different things that are out there for students. And I'm glad to hear that you all are doing some of those things there at George Mason. And hopefully, with the new facility that's coming onboard, we'll be able to do the additional CT-type programs, being that Arlington's is starting to shrink. And it's amazing to hear that that's been from 15 to 18 students to where we are now. And probably, it's that number, but probably more kids, I'm sure, want to be involved in some of those different programs there. But I'm really appreciative of hearing a lot that happens and just with the different offerings that we have. My time at, now at my current university, when I got there, IB was not a course offering that they gave credits for. And it was one of the big things that I got there, when we got a new president, and I had a meeting with her and saying that, you know, it makes it kind of difficult in my other job that I do. Recommend kids to come to school here, being that a lot of our students do the IB program. And the faculty is working on and making sure that for the next academic year that we will be accepting IB courses. So it's definitely something that I recognize that we do a great job on, and I want to make sure that our students have the opportunity. Because I said that it would be very hard for me to recommend for some of my students to look at the university, being that they worked really hard for those type of courses, and they're not going to get the benefits of some of those courses. So, but I want to thank you all for coming this evening and sharing with us. It's always great to hear what goes on in the building. Again, don't get the opportunities to come into the buildings as often as we would like, but you all coming tonight, sharing, it gives us a great insight into what goes on in the everyday. And I also want to commend you all on the work that you've done with that social emotional piece, with some of the things that have happened in recent, but that we have our students who are confident and trusting in you all enough that they do come to you all when those things happen versus, and we are able to address those in a very quick and effective way of looking at those things to make sure that all of our students are safe in our buildings. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And actually, in that, kind of in that conversation, the next topic is talking about school safety.
Thank you. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about this, but this is an outgrowth of the conversation that we had at the special meeting a week and a half ago to begin thinking about what could a, for lack of a better term, curriculum be that would be useful to the school board to get a better sense of what is in place with respect to our school safety and security. So what I've put up, what I've put together is sort of a draft plan that would utilize three work sessions, the April 17th work session, the May 15th work session, and the June 19th work session. And the first work session in April would be discussion around the hardening of school sites, for lack of a better term. So what are some of the current practices that we have in place with respect to the physical plant itself? How do we restrict and limit and provide access to our buildings? How do we enhance communications in our buildings and the like? These are just some sample ideas that we're sort of putting together. The second part of that would be specific to the social emotional aspects of it that you heard a little bit about tonight. Things, for example, how do we identify students that needed extra support from a social and emotional perspective? And what social and emotional supports are needed in our schools to support students who have been identified as in need? So we would explore those topics, if you will, on that April 17th. So you would hear some of the things you've heard tonight from Ms. Reyes and the team and from Ms. Hardy and Dr. Dipold as well. But those would be coming from some folks on the ground as well as central office. On the May 15th date, we would be looking at what is national best practice? What are we hearing from the field? So for example, in the area of school counseling, we would look at the American School Counseling Association or ask a model of school counseling to look at how do we support kids? We would look at the American Psychology, the American Psychologists Association. We would look at the School Social Workers Association. We would look at school safety organizations and the like to see what are the best practices from a hardening perspective and also from that social emotional. And then in the last meeting, we would then identify, based on sort of where we are now and what our current reality is, what are the national resources say our best practices? Is there a gap? And if there is a gap, what are some of those things that we should do to begin closing that gap? And in addition to that, we would share also, and maybe we'll have this before June, the timeline's not quite set, but we are in the middle of doing a school safety audit. And I would anticipate that we would be able to share the results of that school safety audit, and that would be done in a closed session, not in public, where we would identify where the vulnerabilities in the schools are and what our remediation plans are to take care of those. And then we would come out and in public, talk about what are best practices and do some comparisons of what the national experts say are with respect to where we are. So sort of following up on your conversation a week and a half ago, what could we put together that would kind of pull this thread through between now and the end of the year that really continues to keep a focus on school safety, both from a facilities perspective, but also from a social and emotional perspective as well? So I put that out there as a draft. I'll pass it out to the school board members in the Friday update that's coming out this week. And if you have some things that you'd like to add to it with respect to questions or things you'd like for us to consider, we'll take that feedback and put a final draft together for you to look at before that April, before that April date. But we'd like to start working in that direction, if that's the will of the board.
Any comments? Yeah, I think this is a great starting point and look forward to kind of the final product of what you're going to be hitting over these three work sessions and then building to that final product that we will potentially be voting on of, and/or any potential funding needs that we may need to address with the City Council, General Government.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our first reading of policies.
I'm going to turn it over to Tricia Minson, who has.
Ms. Minson?
Has a policy for you to look at tonight.
Good evening. As you all know, we have been in the transition from moving from our numbered policies to the lettered policies, hoping to go with personnel and through that. But as other policies have come to our attention, we're trying to address those. And the one policy we have for first reading tonight is our weapons policy. I'm proposing for first reading policy JFCD of the Virginia School Board Model Policies, replace our policy 9.28. As a little bit of background, our policy 9.28 had a number of things in it that we'd gotten, or one item in it at page two, under C4. Students could possess antique firearms, as long as they were in a case, and firearms could be located within the vehicles of, within trunks or unloaded shotguns or rifles and firearms could be in a rack in a motor vehicle. And we had a number of community members reach out, either via board members or directly to administration here at central office, asking why there is this exception. And I did some digging, and it looks like this was a vestige of hunting times. Some school divisions within Virginia still do keep this within their policies. In speaking with Elizabeth Young, who's the legal counsel for VSB, she said there are definitely divisions who want this, whose students wouldn't come to school if they'd have to miss out on time to go home to get their rifle to then go out and hunting, be hunting in the community. But I don't think that's something that is a need still for our school, and that seemed to be a loophole that we wanted to close in light of some of the events that have been going on across the country. In looking, however, at the model policy from the VSB, I raised a number of questions with Elizabeth, and she agreed that there were some issues with that model policy that she has been working on edits for. So this policy that is posted on board docs right now has a number of variances. As you know, I've been including in black the text of the VSB policy and then in red any additions or changes that I would recommend. And our old policy seemed to cover a lot of areas that were not covered in the VSB model policy that did make sense, I think, to include. That would include not just school grounds, there could be no weapons, but no weapons on school-owned or leased property. So there would be no question of whether is central office a school ground? Well, it's school-owned or leased property. Also, the definition of weapon, we included a number of weapons that could cause damage to others that weren't necessarily included in the Virginia School Board Model Policy that I think should have been in there. You'll see that knife is including any blade designed to cut or a point designed to penetrate. We included chemical or natural compounds that could produce an adverse effect on normal functions of the human body. So that would include mace or pepper spray as being a weapon that's not permitted on school property, on school grounds, on school leased property. Our policy had broken down category one and category two weapons, saying category one weapons were weapons that were governed by the Virginia Code as not being allowed in schools. And category two are weapons that the board wanted to go beyond and say, these are also what we want to consider weapons, which is our right, under the code, to monitor our buildings and our spaces. Some of the items under category one weapons, though, from policy 9.28, actually were not prohibited by the Virginia Code, and I didn't see a need to break them out into category one or category two weapons. If all of them are weapons that we don't want students or visitors to possess on campus, it made sense to define them all as weapons. The codes, the section two, on page two of the policy I'm proposing for first reading, expulsion of, for possession of firearms, that comes directly from the Virginia Code that anyone who possesses a firearm on school grounds must be expelled for at least one year. That's statutorily, although there can be exceptions that the school board can determine based on recommendation of the superintendent, that even if a student does have a firearm, perhaps it doesn't rise to that level of at least one year, but that is governed by the Virginia Code. And I thought that it made sense to break down the penalties for possession and use of weapons that are not firearms and that allow for special circumstances, but that it needs to be, the general idea is these weapons won't be allowed on our grounds, and there will be penalties for that, that then can, you can take into account the specific student or what the weapon was and what was the way by which they had it on campus. The other thing the VSB model policy did not have is exceptions to the weapons policy. You'll see that on page three. If a student possesses a weapon as part of the school's curriculum or activities, for example, a knife as part of a home economics or facts course, we want students to have that, but it also can't be used as, it needs to be used as part of the curriculum. Number two there for exceptions would be weapons as part of any program sponsored by the school or organization and authorized. And three would be a student with a plastic knife customarily used for food preparation, as long as it's being used for that purpose. So I guess the difference between one and three is a metal knife that's used as part of a cooking or culinary class would be different than a plastic knife that a student has in their lunchbox that they're using to slice food that they brought with them from home, for example. And then the model policy from the VSB did differentiate for students with disabilities. The only difference, this compares with the disciplined students of disabilities, the policy the board has already adopted, JGDA. There is one exception that defines knives separately for students with disabilities, that a knife, a blade of less than two and a half inches in length, and that's just governed by the Administrative Regulation of Federal law at 18 U.S.C. 930 G2. So wanting to make sure that our policies reflect both the Virginia Code and the United States Code as far as weapons in school. And there is an exception for students with disabilities who have a knife that's two and a half inches or less, can't be removed for more than 45 days. And that is consistent with our other policy that's been adopted. So I realize that's a lot more background of policies than I usually provide, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have about this proposed new policy, JFCD.
Thank you very much. Ms. Russell?
So the one question I had was regarding the, at designated bus stops. And so since, imagine the majority of our designated bus stops are public property, I was just curious like how we would have jurisdiction over that or be able to dictate that.
That's a good question. We don't have jurisdiction over those spots, but by having included it as something that we won't allow at those areas, it allows a school to discipline students if a student has brandished a weapon or brought a weapon to a bus stop and then has left it there. Yet if a student feels threatened and brings that information into school, it impacts our students, it impacts the school day. I discussed this with Dr. Noonan, since we don't, we're not responsible for portal-to-portal. Once a student gets on the bus, then there are responsibilities, so we certainly can limit what students can bring on a vehicle. But if a student has something at a bus stop and then leaves it there, if, to the extent that has impacted students who were then on the bus talking about it, who come into school talking about it, a student has felt threatened or known it's there or is worried about going back to that, following our policy, I don't think that opens us up to any other liability. But that allows us to do, one of the things that we have in our policy that I've added that was from our leftover policies, that we will report to the police any violations of this policy. So that would allow us to not be overstepping if a student brings one of these identified weapons to a bus stop. We learn about it, it's left at the bus stop, it doesn't come onto the bus or come onto our school property, but still is impacting the school day and would allow us to then reach out to the police, let them know it's there, go and get it, and then handle that under our weapons policy, which would be confiscating that and then disposing of that weapon as provided for under the law.
So I don't know.
Did that answer my question?
Yeah, it did. So I was just curious, and I don't know if we've gotten to this policy in terms of our vision yet, but would there be like a parallel to that if a student were to have, like, say, illegal drugs or alcohol or something at a bus stop? Is there something in that policy? Or when we get to that policy, are we going to include the bus stop in the same way?
I don't know if we're going to, but I would be happy to look into that further and see what the case law is. I think it's slightly different for harm to self versus harm to others. So it might be that we need to draw a line, and depending upon what case law means, we don't want to overreach so much that we're making, trying to make public property our own domain. At the same time, I think that there's a nexus with safety to students in possession of a dirk, a razor, a slingshot, different things at the bus stop, where it would make sense for us to say we're trying to protect the safety of our students, knowing that some bus stops might be used at different grade levels. And if something is left there, it could harm other students at other schools versus, I guess, drugs, you could say the same thing if it's known what it is. So I can look into that when we are bringing those policies forward, but.
Well, I think as long as, you know, as long as we're differentiating between, I guess, general illegal activity and specifically harm to others. And so whether we want to, I guess, look at general illegal activity, which we probably don't want at the bus stop either.
Up there, Mr. Anderson?
So I guess my first question overall is trying to make sure I understand clearly, this policy is applied to students or to anybody coming onto campus or the other places that are listed?
This applies to weapons in school or on school property or school leased property. So it applies to students and teachers and visitors.
Okay. So then, picking up on Ms. Russell's question about bus stops, they're public space, right?
Yes.
Does this put us in any conflict with Virginia Code on open carry laws or concealed weapon carry laws by an adult that happens to be in the area, not a student?
I think, that's a good question. I think this allows us to take disciplinary action against students if they have the weapon at the school bus. I don't think this allows us to police a parent or other community member who chooses to bring a weapon even open carrier if they have a closed carry permit. I don't think that this would allow us to have any authority over them or policing power over members of the community, but it would allow us to address students who would bring a weapon that they are not legally possessing or that brings a weapon that they are legally possessing, but we're saying you can't have it here, because there's no way to necessarily dispose of it safely or to keep your peers safe.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, I mean, I can think of the edge case, like an 18-year-old student with a, you know, a weapon. student with, you know, a weapon that they're bringing for whatever reason, but I'm just trying to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in any kind of potential legal issue with our authority to put that in place. Another one in the same area, school-sponsored activity. Would that include field trips, concerts, things like that?
Yes.
What if the venue has a different policy? If we're at someplace where the venue has, for whatever reason, I don't know what it would be off the top of my head, a more liberal policy than this?
Sure.
What does that do?
I don't think this policy would allow us, again, to police anyone else who possesses a weapon at one of those facilities, but if we found out one of our students did have one of these weapons on a field trip where they were off-campus or they were at a stadium where something were allowed, it would allow us to see the nexus between the school event and work with the student to make sure that the support's in place and that the student's not threatening others, and if we needed to, discipline the student for having the weapon on campus. Your question reminded me that there's a Virginia Code section that allows school boards to prohibit firearms on school grounds despite what other laws say. So in some ways, it's Virginia Code 22.1277.07:1, policies prohibiting possession of firearms. And it says, notwithstanding any provision of the law to the contrary, each school division may develop and implement procedures addressing disciplinary actions against students and may establish disciplinary policies prohibiting the possession of firearms on school property, school buses, and at school-sponsored activities. So school-sponsored activities would allow us to prohibit them, certainly we couldn't police areas that we don't own, so if they go to a field trip that allows weapons, we can't control what other people do, but we could control what our students possess and we could discipline for what our students, if our students were to possess a weapon at a school-sponsored activity, school buses, same thing, and school property. So as far as the school bus stop is concerned, I think there's a close enough nexus for if you have it at a school bus stop and then you're getting on a school bus, what do you do with it or how do you dispose of it or how do you keep other students safe? But...
Well, and I'm just thinking about the totality of the sentence, right? You're saying that all of these things are prohibited in grounds for disciplinary action, but that's not, it's not written in such a way that it absolutely forces a particular action to be taken. It simply says, you shouldn't do it, you can't do it, it's not allowed, and we have the ability to take disciplinary action as a result of this.
Right, and the only place where disciplinary action is required is for possession of firearms on school property or at a school-sponsored activity, and that's where the Virginia Code is very clear.
So then, okay, some, a little bit more detailed questions. The first bullet point?
Yes.
Just a suggestion of a potential rewording to consider.
Okay.
The way it's written, rifles are a kind of projectile rather than a kind of firearm.
Okay.
And so perhaps just putting rifle after revolver or something, and then the rest of it would be unchanged in some sense?
I believe that line is word for word from 277.07 of the Virginia Code. We could change it around, but I do think it is helpful to follow what the legislature set down for their definition of weapon, since that I know is one that comes directly from there.
Going further down now, there's a typo on the last line?
Yes.
Pepper stray as opposed to pepper spray?
That needs to be corrected, thank you.
And then my, sort of getting back into things that are a little more significant. So Section 4, Exceptions to the Weapons Policy, talks about exceptions for students. What about staff, faculty? If, as it's written right now, there's no exception, for instance, for a teacher using an X-acto knife in an art class, just to pick an example. So is that something that we should consider?
I think we should consider it. It's interesting because the penalties for possession of use of weapons that are not firearms is only the penalties in the discipline of students, not of teachers. And I would have to look at how this compares to our personnel policies and expectations. I don't know if there's a separate policy on weapons for staff, but...
Which is sort of why I was asking at the beginning, is this, you know, for students only or not?
Sure.
So the question is, since it's exceptions to the whole policy, whether or not this is something that needs to be thought of, I think.
So Trish, I do believe that there was one, because when I was looking through the big binder of policies, that there was...
You're showing, you're looking at this.
I know, I am. And so I'm fairly confident that there was a staff policy as well as a student policy.
And I don't know, that's helpful. I'm so glad you know that, and thank you for looking through all those. I don't know if the VSBA model policy merges those two or not, so it might be that we have that covered for now in our personnel weapons policy, but if the model policies only just have a general policy for weapons, that might be something that we want to look into. Although this is right now categorized under JFCD, and J is policies for students, so it could be that there's a weapons policy for staff that's separate, but I appreciate the question. I appreciate that you know that, Ms. Russell.
And then I guess my final question is, there's an exception on page four, right at the very end, B2, that an exception for a pocket knife with a blade length less than two and a half inches. Why does that only apply there and not to a knife anywhere else in the policy?
So this is just for the discipline of students with disabilities. The United States Code has said that students with disabilities cannot be disciplined in the same way. There's a 45-day removal, where if a student with disabilities comes into school with a certain type of weapon, they can be removed for 45 days if certain criteria are met. And the United States Code has differentiated that a blade less than two and a half inches is not a dangerous enough weapon or a weapon for which a student with disabilities can be removed into an interim alternative educational setting for 45 days.
And so the question would be for us to consider whether or not that kind of a exception on the, would be something we'd want to have under knives, knives in general, but I could see why that might not be something we want to do. So I would, just wanted a clarification about why that was, you know, not potentially other parts of the policy.
Sure, and under our previous policy, category one versus category two weapons, a knife with a blade of, it was actually less than three inches, would be considered a category two weapon for which there'd be maybe some different discipline. When I went through the changes, the proposed changes to the policy with the principals, often what I have seen in my 18-month tenure or so is students who have a pocket knife that they don't realize that they've taken on a camping trip with their family, and the student gets to school and she realizes she has it, and that's, the policies, it's written, still allows principals or administrators who are working on the discipline with students to take into consideration the length of the knife, how the knife was discovered, or the type of weapon, how it was discovered, how it was brought to the attention of administration. Did the student bring it forward, or were they sharing it with their peers, or how did we learn about it? So I asked whether it made sense to limit the length of the blade, and at this point we didn't think so. That can be one of the circumstances that the administration considers in determining the discipline for the student, so...
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
I mean, I think you just answered mine. Mine was just about pocket knives. You know, if a kid has a pocket knife in their backpack they forgot to take out, so that's under the discretion.
It's still a weapon, we still don't want it on campus, but based on the student and the discipline and the relationship that they have, it's something that can be taken into consideration, yeah.
So my question would be, it sounds like there are several questions that you all have brought forward tonight, but I wanted to ask if you all would be, so that we can close the current loophole, if you would be willing to entertain waiving first reading going to second, and then at our next meeting, Ms. Minton and Superintendent can work on some of the questions and kind of cleaning up the language, and then we revote on the policy with the questions being answered or any additional questions that you all may have between now and our meeting, next School Board meeting in the next two weeks. Would you all be open to doing that?
So let me just make sure that I'm stating it back to make sure I've understood what you're getting at, Mr. You're basically suggesting waive first reading, treat at our next meeting next week, that second reading, we're ready to move forward with a vote, or tonight?
That we would vote tonight so that the loophole is closed of the weapons, but we would have the questions that are being asked tonight and potential other board members who may have questions, get those answered and addressed within the policy, and then in two weeks, we would vote on the new policy that addresses the questions that you all have.
Would that require a separate first reading for any potential revision of that policy?
Look, you could waive, you could waive first reading again if you'd like. So tonight you'd be voting on a policy, and then you'd be revoting on another policy in two weeks that would be the revised if you waived first reading next time.
So what would be the advantages of that, then?
So the advantage, as I see it, is that, one advantage would be, right now we have a policy that allows students to have guns on campus so long as they're unloaded in their car. Given the current climate that we're experiencing, the sooner we can fix that policy, the better. So I think the advantage is that if you vote, if you waived first reading and went to second reading tonight, that loophole would close as soon as you voted on it. Students would no longer be allowed to have guns in their car in the trunk, unloaded or the like. Now, there are some other things that have been brought up tonight. For example, there's a couple misspellings, there's maybe some words that need to be moved around that we could work on and clean up between now and the next meeting, bring the revised version of it at the next meeting with the cleaned-up language, and then you could revote on the policy. I didn't hear anything substantive necessarily with respect to the policy. There were some technical questions, but I didn't, I didn't hear anything like, this shouldn't be here. What I think I heard was, this needs some clarification, and we can certainly provide the appropriate clarification. So that would be my only advocacy to consider, waiving first reading tonight would be to close that loophole sooner rather than later.
I think, so basically what you're saying is voting on what would generally be an imperfect policy, but it would close the loophole. And I guess the only question I have is if we could look into the staff or the, you know, the parallel policy for staff, and if there's some way we could move that up on the rotation of the policies, just to make sure that they're in sync with each other.
Any other concerns or any comments about that? Mr. Anderson?
I actually think, because my sort of top-level question was, because it is a J policy, does it just apply to students? Does it apply to students and staff? If we can take what you were saying, Ms. Russell, and look at that together, I think that would be a really good thing. I see the, I certainly see the benefit to closing the loophole. My only question is trying to make sure that there's an opportunity for any of the other members who might like to weigh in later or any other questions, so that second chance.
And this would give you that opportunity within that window of the two weeks from today to two weeks to our next meeting for, as you all look at it additionally, and I...
Two weeks from today, that the work session or at the...
Whenever our next...
Oh, it's next Tuesday.
Next.
The work session is next Tuesday.
The work session is next Tuesday. The work session is Tuesday, that some of the initial questions can get answered, but for the actual voting again would be...
April 10.
April, yeah, April 10.
So we could put it on as a work session topic to revisit the revised version. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what, the timing of this, too. So if you waive first policy tonight, move to second reading, vote on it, it's approved, by next Tuesday, we'll take a look at the policies, we'll take a look at it with respect to being a J policy, we'll clean up some of the language, you know, we'll talk about moving up the other, and then you could, and then on April 10th, go to first reading, and if you wanted, you could waive first reading right into second reading. Did I get all that right? I'm sorry, I'm just wanting to make sure there's clarity here.
That's exactly what I'm doing.
I'm just curious, I think we're all kind of on the fly here, but it's just more, I would like to close that loophole on the more immediate front and then take care of the questions that you all have, which are very important questions that need some additional work, but have that question, I didn't think about the work session next week, but that'll be an opportunity to have a look at some of those things. And then I will also reach out to the members who are not here to, if they have questions about the policy as well, to forward those to Ms. Minton as soon as they can, so that for work session next week, they'll be able to, give you some time to work on those as well, and hopefully won't be a lot extra ones coming for you, coming to you on Tuesday night. But again, we still have a window of time to, if there are questions that come on Tuesday night, to still work on those and address them, and then have that policy, the revised policy sent to us prior to the April 10th meeting, so that we're all kind of on the same page of then going through the, passing the official cleaned-up policy at that point. I think we're all are okay with that? Understood now, I think?
Yes.
All right, so I guess, do we have to vote on the...
We need to make a motion.
Motion to waive first reading, and then vote on that.
So I make a motion that we waive first reading of this policy, JFCD.
And, did you have another question before, if the second thing happens?
I'm trying to remember the order of which amendments and seconding needs to happen, because I was going to make an amendment to that motion, but I'm trying to...
I think you can do that now.
Make an amendment to the motion before it's voted on?
Yeah.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to say, subject to, you know, further discussion at the next work session and then revisiting at the April 10th meeting?
Well, I think isn't the discussion at the next work session would actually be a revision of the policy that we're currently going to, so we're basically passing a policy, and then we're going to go back and write a new policy.
Write a new one and re-pass it.
So it's a new, yeah, so we're adopting a policy now, so it wouldn't be a revising of it, it would be basically saying, we're now going to create this new policy with the revisions that we've been discussing.
Right, so that's why I was saying revisiting the topic, not revising the policy, but revisiting this at the next work session for any changes that have been made in response to the questions that we had, is that, I mean, I'm not sure of the language I'm trying to get at.
I think I got what you're trying to say, just making sure that it's in there that we're going to be revisiting, so, yeah, accept that as?
I accept that.
Okay, and you all need a second.
I need a second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, okay. And now we'll obtain a motion to approve.
Correct.
Okay.
I move that we approve policy JFCD.
Do I second?
I second it.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you very much. Next up will be approval of the 2018 summer day camp fees and 2018, 2019 daycare fees.
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Michael.
So thank you. The daycare advisory committee has met and have approved the fees that are before you. So you'll see there's an increase in the fees for summer of 2.5%, but then I'm also very pleased to say that the fees for next school year will remain level with this school year. So tonight we're just seeking your approval to move forward with these fees.
Thank you very much. Any questions from any, anyone?
Mr. Anderson?
Just for clarification, for anybody who may be listening, I'm looking at the file, summer day camp fees 2018 with the adjusted income scale and the breakdown by number of children. For unit of time, for $250 for households, $80,000 and above for one child, covering...
A week, I believe.
Per week? Okay.
Anything else? I will obtain a motion then.
I motion that the School Board approve the 2018 summer day camp fees and the 2018-19 school year daycare fees as presented.
Do I second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to future agenda items. Any, I notice anyone like that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We had discussed the idea at some, at a previous meeting of bringing in a future agenda item for regular updates of the current year budget, actuals versus planned budget. So I just wanted to see, can we make sure to put that on a future work item?
It's on the work session next week.
Excellent, thanks for reminding us.
But it is on there.
Thank you.
All right, we want your Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a whole lot to report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a whole lot to report this evening, but I did want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for a nice chamber gala the other night. Had a chance and an opportunity to meet with a number of folks in the community, and talk about the work that we are doing collectively on behalf of our students. Want to also say congratulations to our champions of character tonight that were here. Of course, we did recognize them, but we also have some teams that have done particularly well. I think you heard about the swim team, for sure, and our girls' basketball team, and our robotics team, 14-18, will be moving on to, to the next round as well. Want to congratulate them. Want to thank all of you for attending the city council meeting last night, where our chair presented the school board's budget. I am very pleased to, to know that the city manager included in his budget the full amount of, of our budget request, and with that full amount, it would not, the tax rate would not increase above the six cents, which was discussed for a while. In fact, it actually came down. So, the fact that we can do everything with five and a half cents, including the schools, is pretty exciting, and I, and I hope that our colleagues on the city council side see it as, as exciting, as, as, as exciting as I do. Just want to update the board, tomorrow is the day where there, it's one month marking, marking the one-month anniversary of the unfortunate events in Parkland, Florida. At 10 o'clock a.m., some of our students at the high school, some of our students at the middle school, and a few students at Thomas Jefferson Elementary do plan, as a student-led, organized group, to walk out. We have worked with those groups that came forward and indicated that they were interested in memorializing the students and the adults that were killed in Parkland, Florida, and we've been able to work with them to find a way to do it in a safe and secure environment. Our high school students will be moving out of the school at 10 o'clock for 17 minutes, onto the stadium field, where they will hold a moment of silence, and then be reading the biographies of the 17 people that were killed in Parkland, Florida. At the middle school, our students at the middle school intend to have a moment of silence and then read some poetry, and at Thomas Jefferson Elementary, a very small group of, of fifth graders have indicated that they'd like to do a 17-minute moment of silence, which is a very long moment of silence, but a moment of silence nonetheless to, to memorialize the, the people that were killed in Florida. So, anyway, we, I have been in close coordination with the principals, I want to ensure the community of that. We take this very seriously, the safety and security of the students that will be walking out. For the students that choose not to walk out, and, and as well as the students that, that choose to walk out, their safety and security emotionally and socially are very important to us as well. We are neither supporting nor not supporting the efforts, and if students do choose not to walk out, the expectation is that classes will go on, and, and we may do some combining of classes, but there will be instruction happening in the building. Further, we are a community of people that care about each other and believe in diversity in all its forms, including diversity of thought, and as a consequence of that, any bullying of students that didn't participate, or any bullying of students that did participate, will not be tolerated and will be dealt with through the discipline process. But those students that are participating will not, will not be marked absent during the time that they are participating. So, the last piece of coordination that we've done, as I've been in contact this week and last week with Chief Mary Gavin, and she has indicated that there would be some more patrols around the school, and parents who wish to participate are certainly welcome, but please don't come onto campus. If you would leave this, since it is a student-led protest, we would invite parents to line the sidewalks on Haycock and Route 7 for George Mason High School or Henderson, and if parents would like to line the Oak Street in front of TJ, they're certainly welcome to do that as well. So, looking, looking forward to getting through tomorrow morning without any incident, and moving back to the day as, as it goes on tomorrow, tomorrow morning. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the Superintendent? My one question is that last evening, just want for either the Superintendent or Ms. Michael to kind of explain exactly how the, that our budget is not going to be, as we're telling folks, not raising, requiring a tax rate increase.
Sure, I'll, I'll start the story, and then I'll let Ms. Michael continue it, and she can correct me. And, and it goes back to when we started the bond referendum campaign, and we talked about six cents on the tax rate to support, four cents for the high school, one cent for the library, and one cent for the city hall project, equalling six cents. There was no mention in there of any pennies on the tax rate for the school operating budget, or the city, general government's operating budget. So, when we came forward with our 2.8, 2.9 percent transfer request, what we learned was, last night, that actually, with the 2.9 percent request that we've put together, and the 1.7 percent request that the city government has put together, and the high school, and the library, and the city, and the city hall, the actual tax rate increase would only require a three-cent additional tax, not the six cents that was originally slated. So, remember, the six cents was just for capital, they've been able to bring that capital request down to three cents. And, and the way that it's been done is, there's been some balancing between AV and some other revenues that have come in, the revenues are higher. So, so the truth is that the schools, with their 2.8 percent request, 2.9 percent request in the city, 1.7 percent request, are both below the organic revenue growth of the city, which is about 3.4 percent. As a consequence of coming in below the 3.4 percent, it wouldn't require any additional pennies on the tax rate to fund the city schools or the general government's budget. So, I'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Michael to add to that.
So, one of the things that also came up at that presentation yesterday is, there is an increase of two and a half cents to support WAMADA, right? So, when you add that debt service, the savings that we get from the operating budgets, but then add the two and a half cents for WAMADA, that's how they're getting to the 5.5 cents that was included in the proposal yesterday from the city manager. So, in order to make all of this clear, we have a community meeting that's happening this Sunday afternoon at 2:00 p.m. We're updating the presentation from last night to include some of this additional information, to try to make it really clear to the community.
I think one of the things that Ms. Michael said that's probably the best clarity that we can give, is that the three cents, that's not the six cents, but now it's down to three cents, is for debt service. It was debt service on the capital plan, no operating, either the city side or the school side, and the additional two and a half cents is just for WAMADA. So, the five and a half cents just has nothing to do with operating costs at all. So, to say that the schools are increasing the operating, increasing pennies on the tax rate because of our operating costs is, is actually not true. And, and what we're seeing happen now is, if the schools were reduced from 2.9 or 2.8 down to two, we could save on that capital amount by a penny, which would mean that it would be our operating budget that would be paying for the capital program that's come forward. And that's not what has been discussed for the last several months.
Does that answer it? That answers my question, so I appreciate that. Any other questions, comments? All right, all right, we will now move on to board's student liaison reports, so I'll start, Ms. Anderson, I'm at the end there, if I have any...
No reports at this point.
Okay, Ms. Litten?
The special education committee had a meeting, I believe it was last week. The focus this time was on high school, and really, a lot of what they talked about was part of what they covered tonight, kind of the special supports we have in place in the high school, which at the time I felt was very helpful, given sort of the school safety situation. So, I was going to suggest we hear more about that, but since they presented some of it tonight, I think you guys got a little more of a picture of that.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
Sure, so, last Thursday, I had the pleasure to attend, it was a symposium on strengthening the pipeline from school to work, and went with the BIE people, and so Ms. Hei was there as well. So, it was actually very interesting, they had a number of panels, and just talking about basically what the state of Virginia now has, their expectations for public schools to offer students real-world experience before they enter the workforce. And so, there was a number of different panelists who talked about how either their districts have done that, their organizations, or if they're companies who are actually, you know, on the other end and working with the schools. So, I think it was really helpful, and we got a lot of really great information ideas, and I don't know, Ms. Hei could comment, but I found it very overwhelming as well, in terms of looking at the work that we have ahead of us to try, because I think that it really is one of the directions that we want ahead, in terms of strengthening up pipeline, having more real-world experiences for our children. I know that's something that Ms. Conley has been looking at, too, in terms of the BIE program. So, I think it's exciting, but also a little bit overwhelming, so.
It wa, it was a really great experience watching some of the school divisions and the partnerships that they have with businesses. The one thing that we felt good about is that we are doing some of the things that they talked about, with the portrait of a graduate that's coming out through the Virginia Department of Ed, where we're looking at career and making sure the students are life-ready. We, we are doing some of that, for example, right now, we have five students who are doing externships and internships during the year, and they've been doing it for this second semester. One of the other things that we looked at with, I believe it was Hampton School Division, is some of the academies that they have. So, we were able to see some of the things that they do, and they have IB in some of their high schools as well, and looking at the academies that they have, and giving us some ideas as we look forward to the new school, and what academies we can do, for example, whether it be cyber, or looking at computer science and some of those things. So, it was, it was a great opportunity for us to see some of what they do, and make connections with some of the other school divisions. And Capital One was a business that was there, that's right in Tyson's, that Ms. Conley reached out to hopefully have us connect, and maybe get some of our students to be able to do some interns and externships there. So, we're keeping, moving forward to make sure we meet the needs of our students.
Anything else? Okay, just for me, just want to again thank the staff for their hard work on the budget. I think the presentation was, was good last night, I think some good questions, and some that we expected, and some that we, you know, were a little frustrated by, but I think overall that we have a, a good relationship with the city council and general government members, and I think we're at a point that, I think overall, we, we presented a budget and supported our budget and our triennial plan, showing that what we, that we are asking for, what we need, and have a strong list of, of items that were left off for, that are just as important, but trying to prioritize this year's budget, and knowing that we have some constraints with that. I think also that we had a great opportunities, and I think with our new members, and thank them for beginning that process of that whole budget process, and kind of hitting the ground running with that, but also kind of starting the process of building their relationships with city council members that, throughout the buddy system this year, so that you have those opportunities to, to talk with them, get to know them, because that's what it's all about, it's about making every effort that we can to, to be a team, because ultimately, the success of the schools, ultimately, is the success of the city, because we all know that, you hear it all the time, of one of the big reasons that most folks move here is because of the great school system that we have, and I think the successful schools also allows us to attract those businesses and things that we're looking at, to hopefully bring in with some of the, hopefully with the West Falls Church Project, and being right next door to us would be a great opportunity for that. I think, appreciate those who were able to come out last night, and I know we, I do appreciate the fact that my colleagues have been very visible at a lot of different community meetings, which is very good, that I feel I have support now that I am at those meetings as well, but don't feel like I have to be at everything because to make sure that we have a presence at those meetings. So, I do appreciate, at this point of your time, that you all are giving as well, and again, hit the ground running and being able to do those things. Looking forward to the upcoming community meetings that we will be having, again, talking about our budget with, during the meeting. I believe the first one is on, is it this Sunday? This Sunday. Again, sharing our, our information about why we got to where we are, and that, and the hard work that our staff has done of scrubbing our budget and coming up with almost, with just about $700,000. And, again, over the last now five years that I've been on the board, this is the lowest that we've, we've come in at, and I guess, what's it, 20, from a 2012 high of a 14 percent increase to being able to, and coming down each year, but still being able to provide the, the work that we do for our students and staff has been, I think, a great accomplishment that we've been able to do over this, that time. So, looking forward to the continued work, and through passage of the budget in April, and then moving on, putting those plans into place for that. I think we have a, a great budget, and I think we are, have prioritized some of the things that, particularly for me, the, the school psychologist, it's, it definitely blows my mind that the, the ratio that we have now with that, and then also with the social worker, because those are definitely some things that I think a lot of folks don't necessarily, particularly the social worker side of it, that they don't realize that we have those needs here in the city of Falls Church because of the, the high incomes that we have here in the community. A lot of folks don't realize that there are folks who live in our community that need and take advantage of some of those services, and have such a high ratio that our social work wants to do more, but because of sheer number than one person, it makes it difficult. So, I do look forward to next year when we are able to kind of focus on that one, but even before, you know, the things have happened with Parkland, we were already focusing on bringing those numbers in for our psychologists, but it just heightened that, that awareness that we recognize that that, that number needs to be lower, and having the opportunity with a lot of the things, and the stresses that our students have, having that support network in place, I think is a really important part of what we have to do as a, as a school system. So, again, thank you all very much. And we have a couple of minutes to approve this evening. Ms. Kedell's been busy again, looking, getting some things taken care of. So, I will ask unanimous consent on approval of the minutes for January 24th, and is that the correct date, the 2017?
Unfortunately, that is the correct.
Just wanted to make sure. February 13th, 2018, February 16th, 2018, February 20th, 2018, and March 2nd, 2018. All right, without objections, all right. And if, getting some reading material of the enrollment numbers and the school board, and our dates, and which I think was also handed out to you in a printed form as well.
And emailed.
That was everywhere.
We tried, we tried all.
So, we have no excuse to not know, and say, oh, I didn't know that was happening. We got it all, every, every way that we could get it. And if there are no other additional comments from anyone, we will stand adjourned for the evening. Thank you all very much.